Hello, everybody. I'm going to call it over this February 10th meeting of the regular meeting of the Forest Hills Board of Education. This is a meeting held in public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business and is not to be considered a community public hearing. There is a time for public comment as indicated in Agenda Item 11. If you would like to speak at public comment, please fill out the comment cards that are right outside the door where you came in. They will be picked up after the superintendent's report. And at this time, we would like to welcome our board member who was unable to be with us last month, Kelly Promote, and hope that she will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our pledge allegiance to the light of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hi, thank you, everybody, and welcome. And first up tonight, we have our instructional highlight with Assistant Superintendent for Instruction, Mr. Scott Hade.
Okay. Good evening and welcome to our Board of Education. Superintendent Kirby, staff, community, and we have any students here? I'll make sure you're feeling welcome. As we move into February, I'd like to start with some good news. So bear with me here for just a second because we're going to be talking about K-6 growth and achievement data, which I found to be rather good. For those of you that have taken a look at growth data in the past, typically that growth between fall and winter is not the time to highlight student growth and achievement. So when Superintendent Kirby asked me, hey, you want to do a presentation to look at winter and growth data? I was like, hmm, maybe? So what I have to share with you is really good news, and it's the result of a lot of hard work out there. So let's take a peek. I always like to start with this slide right here just to remind everybody what our vision is for the district. And really, our vision is all learners achieving individual potential. So oftentimes, there is just noise outside of the system that doesn't really affect the system or shouldn't affect the system. But we're laser focused on really those individuals and all of those individuals. Coupled with our guiding principles, I think we have some really great things happening within the district, and I'm really excited to share that with you in just a moment here. Just to give a little bit of context, we are operating with an NTSS system, which means basically we're paying attention to a lot of things. We're looking at social, emotional, are the kids, you know, how are they coming to us? We're looking at behavior, is that getting in the way? And obviously, we're looking at that academic. So there's a lot of things that go into a student's day. And really, it falls under that umbrella of all means all. And so when we talk about educating the whole child, that's really what we mean. And when we talk about what we provide, it's to all children, not some of them, not the ones who just get school instantly, they come walking through the door and everything clicks and makes sense. It's all of our kids. So we're, again, just really excited about that. So when you look at NWEA, this is a nationally normed test with a huge sample size. These are not my codes, these are the codes that when I logged in, this is what I would see. And there's a quadrant report, it's a little bit new. And in that quadrant report, you can fall into one of four categories. Low achievement, high growth, low achievement, low growth, high achievement, high growth, and high achievement, low growth. And within that, they can put a school, and it's designated with that little block with the S on it. And that's where a particular school would fall within a quadrant report. I was very, very pleased with what I saw because this is the data that we saw. Every single one of our elementaries fell into that category, going back into that green, that high achievement, high growth. And that's based on the scores from moving from fall to winter. So basically, when we got students in the fall, we gave them some instruction, and here's what happened. So when we look at both math and reading, this is what we were seeing. All of the dots that you see on there are representative of each individual elementary school. When we blow that up a little bit, we can go in and then take a look at of those schools, where do the grade levels fall? And so that's what you're seeing there as it relates to math instruction. Again, notating, we still fall into that high achievement, high growth. And then when we look at reading, same thing. Now, obviously, we want that to continue to go, what we say, up and to the right. And I would have no reason to not expect that. What was fascinating to me is we've always had outliers, like schools that are there. But what I noticed, or what we noticed was, it was the whole system that moved there. And so we're really excited about that. So then we started asking, well, why? What could be the cause of this? And so what I want to do is just talk a little bit about what we call our tiered decision-making matrix or our guidelines. So I know this is a lot of words up here, and it's hard to follow. But really, the takeaway for the board, what I want you to know is that when students take the growth test, they fall within a percentile. And based on that percentile, that dictates to us what we'll do and how we'll respond for each and every individual student. And so if they, like, for example, if their scores are above that 60th percentile, we'll move along that category. If they fall between the 36th and the 59th, and then we've got a series of yes, no, and then that will dictate the intervention that students receive at the elementary during something we call win time. That's what I need. So that's that tier two, okay? Tier one is what every kid gets, tier two is what they need, based on where they perform. So this is the matrix for K-4. We also have one at the 5-6 grade level. A little bit different, and the reason that it's different is because we have different tools available to us. Those tools are resources, are all universal throughout our district. They're research-based, staff has been trained, they know how to use those, and we're starting to see some really good growth based on what kids need. So the interventions are in place, the time is in place, and we're starting to see great results with that. We also, at the other end of the spectrum, so if you think about interventions, we're also thinking about challenging or enrichment resources. So we're taking care of, because both kids have needs, those that need a challenge and those that need interventions. So we're very mindful of those things, and some of those resources are laid out for you up here. And again, I apologize, it's hard to see all of those, but you'll have access to this and all of these are clickable links. So why is this happening? A couple of things that have changed. We have targeted intervention tools, UFLI, Bridge the Gap, all of these things are based in research. We also have what we call our NTSS coaches at each and every elementary building. They're there to support teachers, they're there to help coordinate those tier-two and tier-three efforts. Each one of our buildings at the elementary level also does scheduled data meetings. And so they're looking at those results. Now, I showed you a very high level, okay? We took a look at where the buildings fall, we took a look at grade level. Within those grade levels, and we can break that down into teacher and then students. I'm not going to show student data out there. But what our teachers do is they look at each and every single one of those students and decide what they need. The system has provided opportunity for the grade levels to discuss those students, where they're at, what they need, and how things are going. But most importantly, none of this gets done without a really highly dedicated and skilled instructional staff. And that's what I believe we have here. Our teachers are working incredibly hard to learn new systems, to learn new resources, and to really change what they do throughout the day. They've invested in this win, in this win time opportunity, and we're starting to see great results, and our students are responding to it. So I'm really excited about the interventions that we have in place, the enrichment opportunities that we have in place, and it's starting to show up in the data, and that's really, really important. So that's what I have for you today. It's just a snapshot from fall to winter. And I'm hoping, I'm pretty sure it's going to happen, from winter to spring, we're going to continue to see that grow. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to share, and I will turn it back over if you have any questions, or I can just go sit down.
Thank you. I, it's great to see upper right quadrant, that's obviously where we're on, everybody. And I think it's, I'm glad that you touched on the fact that these tier-one and tier-two supports are not only for the kids who need some help because they're struggling, but they're also a way to provide extra challenges for kids that are sort of above their markers. So it really does make sure that everybody's getting to what it is they need. So I appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you, you're welcome.
Anybody else have anything for Mr. Hade? Thanks, Scott. Okay, we will then turn to our consent grouping. Can I please have a motion to approve, well, first, is there anything that anybody wants to pull out for stuff to consider? Consent grouping? Can I have a motion to approve consent grouping items 5A1 through 5C1?
So move.
Second. All right, and since that, we will head over for a curriculum report. You can sit down.
All right, we had a good meeting on Wednesday. We heard quite a bit from Finance and Operations, but I'm going to leave that to Dr. Rashad in a second. And then we did also get to hear a more elaborate presentation from some of our high school English teachers. We, last meeting, last board meeting, we talked about the addition of a few English courses in the course catalog for our high school students. And so on Wednesday, we had four high school English teachers come and present to us about those courses in more depth and what the goal of those courses are. So we had Amber Ashley from Eastern High School, and Doreen Barnes from Eastern, Elise Greenwood from Eastern, and Zarabau Camp from Northern come and talk about the addition of our pre-AP English 1 class, which would be for ninth graders, and our pre-AP English 2 course, which would be for our, for our 10th graders who do not choose to take AP Seminar in 10th grade. I think I have that correct. And so one of the, one of the things that our teachers have identified over the few, the last few years is that a lot of our kids, once they get to high school, might not believe that they have what they need to take AP courses. And they don't have that student self-efficacy to know that they could handle something like this. And then additionally, some of our students who get into AP courses may be lacking some of the necessary skills to do well in those courses, especially when it comes to the high level of writing that is required in those AP courses. So the pre-AP courses are going to aim to do a lot more of intensive paragraph writing instruction, general tools that students will need to take AP courses, and then also talking about, we have four main units that they're going to focus on in those pre-AP courses. So things like plays and poetry, a nonfiction unit, a narrative unit, working at identifying and using compelling evidence, using powerful openings in their writing, incorporating more details. So they really wanted to be able to instill that level of rigor that's necessary for our AP courses in these pre-AP classes. And then they're also going to have this pre-AP English Honors course with some additional units and a higher level of text complexity for the texts that are being read, diving a little bit deeper into the concepts that are in the pre-AP class. And then so extensive grammar also related to elevating writing style. And then we also talked about AP Seminar, which is a course that our 10th graders, for the first time this year, have been taking. And so just moving forward with that. This, this course really operates with the acronym QUEST. So questioning and analysis, understanding, evaluating multiple perspectives, synthesizing ideas, and team kind of collaborative projects. So this class requires students to conduct high levels of research and defense of different positions. And these can be research projects on a wide variety of things that students kind of work to identify that they're interested in. And then oftentimes, they get to work in teams to do this research and these presentations. Doreen Barnes was the teacher that talked about AP Seminar and just really hit on how transformative this course has been for not only the students, but for the teachers. And just watching her students dive into these topics, really believe in themselves that they can do this hard research and do the presentations. It is an AP course, so they still have to do something with the College Board in order to earn the AP credit. So these students have to do a 1,200-word paper during the course of this class. And then they have to do two essays and two presentations before the College Board, before they then also take the AP exam to earn that AP credit. So just, she was really excited about this class and what it's providing for the students in terms of that college-level academic research and how it's really helped a lot of students who didn't feel like they could hack an AP class believe that they absolutely can do an AP class with the right training. So that was, that was the bulk of our meeting. Those, those descriptions of those two courses and what it's doing for our students in all of our schools.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions?
I have one. And so this new design is going to be similar across all three high schools, right? And a lot of this is just the natural path that students will take, or are they going to have to sift through all these options as freshmen and figure out their path, you know, early on? And have all this explained for them too, because I'm trying to keep up with exactly where everybody's.
Yeah, so I mean, so the AP Seminar, for example, as a sophomore, you don't have to take that course.
Right.
You can if you want to, but that is an optional course as 10th grade. So it's essentially replacing Honors English 10. And so if you don't want to take AP Seminar, then you can take the pre-AP English 2. Does that make sense?
Yes, got it.
Ninth graders can take the pre-AP English 1 if they'd like to, or just regular English 9.
Okay, so starting in eighth grade, they'll start to see this through counselors and everybody else.
Yes, yeah, they get, they always get like a showcase of classes that they're able to take, and so these would be detailed for them.
Yeah, okay, excellent.
Okay, we'll move on then, and to Dr. Rashad for Finance Report.
Okay, thanks. We had a great meeting on Tuesday. We didn't, we have no financial statements for us, you noticed in the packet, just because of the timing early in the month of the meeting, so we'll have a couple months of data to look at next month. We, we start off with construction update, as we do a bond construction update. And there's not a lot of updates to be had, which is good news. Everything is pretty much on schedule and on pace, the work happening across the district. Central High, like we approved last month, just know will start this summer, so that's exciting. All those pieces are falling into place. And our bond facilities team will get together again in the next month or so to go see some of this work, to go to Atevista, Pine Ridge, as those schools are concluding their work. So we look forward to that. And, and then we got right into our action items, and there are quite a few that I want to detail. The first is a recommendation to relinquish federal Title III immigrant funds, which we spent some time talking about and clarifying what this is. This, this does make sense to me that we're doing this. We received this package of federal grants for all types of purposes in all different areas of education, different intended uses, different scopes, that all have their strings attached for what they can be used for. And so these Title III immigrant funds are one of those, a very small sliver of that overall chunk that we receive. This is a recommendation to relinquish those funds because we have not found value-add ways to use it. The, the total amount is $9,000 annually, which is not nothing, but it's not a lot of money to put on a, a big program. The, the scope that comes with these funds is very narrow, the applicable student population is very small, and attempts have been made to try and use this, and it hasn't led to meaningful, you know, use of those resources. So as it sits now, we have a, a current balance of $19,500 in this sliver because of prior year's funds that we weren't able to use either. And so this is the process by which we can just officially relinquish these grant dollars back to be repurposed elsewhere. We had a lot of discussion to, to, to understand what we do have in the district and what other grants do come in to support those students who need some of that, and there are many. Just a few of them include the Language Assistance Program that comes out of the General Fund, the Title II English Language Development, some Title I funds go towards this purpose, Section 41, 31A grants. So there's just a lot of other pieces for us to pick from to support these students. And this particular one with all of the strings attached is not one that we find very useful. So that's what that item is, is to relinquish that. Next is the purchase and install of kind of the Phase 2 pilot of our BenQ boards, our interactive flat panels. The initial pilot has been a success, there's been a few boards in every building that have been used. And this is kind of the second stage of this. So this will put two new mobile carts like this that can be moved around class to classroom, two of those in every elementary and middle school, four of them in every high school. And then every media center will receive one around the district as well. And each building will have a wall-mounted kind of fixed version of the board as well. So this is kind of the next phase to keep expanding our, our district utility of them. We went through the RMC purchasing co-op. This will come from 2023 capital projects for an amount not to, to exceed $379,654. Next, we have a, a couple of roofing projects that have been planned at multiple buildings across the district. Eastern Middle High School, Pine Ridge, and the Food Service Building are all due for roofs. As we kind of alluded to last year, they're, the bidders are back. We've got a lot of bids, which is great, that it gets us good pricing on all of these things. And we received no fewer than seven bids for each of these, so I'll just detail them. Eastern Middle High School is being awarded to the low bidder Advanced Construction Group for $574,924. The Pine Ridge roof was the low bidder, Division VII Building Contractors, not to exceed $531,940. And the Food Service Building is recommended to the low bidder as well, Modern Roofing for $125,190. All of those falling under the 2023 capital projects. So that will take place over the summer. Next is another summer project, playground equipment. As part of the 2023 bond language was to add accessible playground equipment across the district. So Game Time is, is the supplier of this equipment, met with principals, met, went and saw every playground, met with the administration to determine the needs and desires of all of our elementary schools. And so through the MIDEO purchasing co-op, we'll be looking to furnish all of the elementary schools with the exception of Goodwilly, if you put them in their group because they have particular needs over there, obviously on their campus or, or different needs. But otherwise, this will outfit all of the other elementary schools, cost not to exceed $5,223,076. And this will be a, a summer purchase and install, so that'll be in soon. Next is ongoing classroom furniture upgrades. This, this round of furniture will impact nearly 100 rooms and spaces across 10 different buildings, four different purchasing co-ops, five different vendors, as we saw in the packet. Total cost not to exceed $2,303,911 out of 2023, and the to-be-received 2025 capital projects funds for that. Next is bus purchase. We are looking to replace four buses is the request. There were three bidders, and the recommendation is to go with the international bus brand from Midwest Transit Equipment. They were not the low bid, it was about a $10,000 difference out of $650,000 or so, so small. But they are the ones that carry this international brand, which is what our, most of our fleet is and what our Transportation Department is very comfortable with and very good at maintaining and all of the rest. So this allows us to standardize for, for pretty marginal extra cost compared to the low bid. So the amount not to exceed $646,464 will come out of the 2025 capital projects. The next is an annual item that we have to authorize and sign a waiver and consent form for four taxing authorities in our district to strike delinquent personal property taxes. This, as we'll recall, after five years of trying to collect, they moved to strike these from the tax rolls. And we, as a receiver of, or recipient of some of those, have to authorize that they do that. The total amount is about $28,000, which does not affect our bottom line. The state makes up that difference for us, anything that we would have lost there. So that was in our packet, that language as well. And then the final piece that we kind of foreshadowed last month that we'll talk about every month for a little while is the operating millage. In our packets, we have the official language to make May 6th a special election and put this proposal on the ballot for us to consider. Again, we will talk about it a lot, there'll be a lot from the district, but just a couple of reminders about it that I would make. This is to renew the 18.1297 mils that we currently have in place, that's going to expire, as well as add an additional .5 mils. We'll recall, we can only levy a maximum of 18 at a time, but this over 18 allows kind of, allows us to protect against rollbacks that have happened to us in the recent past, which is why we had to go to, ask for an increase a couple of years ago to make up that difference. So that just hedges against that. This is not a tax increase, it's still the same 18 mils that we've been levying to these non-homestead properties, so businesses, second homes, not primary residences, every year since 1994. So this is just a, the call to renew that. And this, as another reminder, unlike the bond proposals, unlike recreation millages that, that have their particularly very specific purposes, this is the operating millage. This makes up about a fifth of our total budget that goes towards paying our teachers and benefits and curriculum and all these materials. So this is part of the per pupil allowance that the state expects us to, to receive part of that locally. And if we don't receive that locally, we just lose that money right out, that's not made up by the state in any way. And that equates to about $24 million. So this is an important thing that we've always had great support for, it's part of our operating budget. And all that to just say, mark your calendars, spread the word, because it is kind of an off-election time. May 6th will, will be the date that we will vote on that. And that sums up our meeting. Sure, sure, yeah, 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 thank you. And then, and we should mention that too every time because this, this will come up. As it is an off-year ballot proposal, it's not, it's not tied to a presidential election, a gubernatorial election, we will have to fund this ballot initiative. We had to do this a couple of years ago when we had kind of an off-cycle time as well. The exact cost for that is not yet known because there may be other initiatives from other municipalities that'll be on there as well, and that cost will be split. When we did this a couple of years ago, that cost to the district came out to be in the 30,000, 40,000-ish, 35, I think, range that we paid. But again, this is to allow us to continue receiving $24 million annually. So if we think of it as a cost of doing business. However, to that point, we've always had 10-year renewals because it didn't used to be a thing that you had to pay for off-cycle ballot proposals. That's more of a recent change, I think, or I know. So we are now putting this out there as a six-year renewal so that the next time we go for this, it does line up with an on-cycle election year, and so there will be no cost to that. And obviously, we'll have that in our minds moving forward. But I think even 10 years ago, when it was voted on for the next 10 years, that was not a rule where we had to pay for that. So we'll incur those costs one more time to do this, but it's a necessary thing to make sure we continue to receive that pretty large chunk of our budget. So thank you, if that adds, or feel free to add. So any questions on that or any of the other stuff from Finance?
I'm just curious if you know, the $5 million for the playground equipment, is that going to replace all of the equipment on all the playgrounds? Or is it just additional, replacing where we need it?
Yes, replacing where we need and adding where we need. So it's not ripping out and putting in all new, is my understanding. It's, it's additional equipment that is specifically accessible and more accessible for all of our students. So yes, just, just adding and replacing where needed.
And is it more than just equipment? Is it looking at just the playgrounds overall and safety, or is it just equipment that the project is for the summer to renew?
I think that's the cost of just the new equipment materials, or I don't know, or I'm not sure what else.
Well, I'm just curious if it's, if the playgrounds are being looked at for safety in general, or it's just an equipment replacement?
I think this is the cost just of the new product coming in. I don't think it is cost for looking at the rest of the playground as a whole, but I might be wrong.
I guess, I'm just curious. That's okay. When they went out to each of the schools, they did review all of the equipment and right down to the mulch and how, you know, how deep that is, and do we need to dig some of that out and replace it? of that out and replace it because we just keep adding on and those types of things. So they really looked at existing equipment. And so it's really, uh, it just depends on the location. Some, there are pieces that we're gonna remove, um, because they're not necessarily appropriate anymore, not in good enough condition. So those will be replaced, at least some additional pieces of equipment for that accessibility. And then kind of that safety, uh, if somebody falls, how's it gonna protect them?
Gotcha. Thank you. I appreciate it. Any other questions for Dr. Majad? Okay, terrific. All right, then can we move on to have a local vote on our consent briefing? Yes. Dr. Majad?
Yes.
Ms. Kamal?
Yes.
Mr. Colley?
Yes.
Mrs. Tryon?
Yes.
Dr. Fosson?
Yes.
Mrs. Nyamayer, yes. Thank you. All right, we are now up to our school of choice resolutions. Are you gonna do this every year? And I would ask that Superintendent Kirby could give a quick brief overview because he will do it much more eloquently than Kirby.
Well, I appreciate your confidence in that. Uh, the, the bottom line is with the School of Choice Resolution is just that it allows us more flexibility. Uh, it's something that was collabora- collaborated on with the ISD and all the area superintendents many years ago. We participated, um, with one oh five and one oh five C. There's other, uh, restrictions and there are some financial pieces that go along with it. And by opting out of those pieces, it allows us some flexibility. For example, like with one oh five C, if there's a special education student that's gonna cross boundaries from a contiguous district, you have to negotiate with that, that other district on how much they're gonna pay, uh, to send the student. And you have to get those, those bills, you actually have to get the pay for it, um, as well as transporting the student. It's very complicated and there's not a lot of districts that, um, actually, um, find that successful because we're trying to get money from other school districts and so on. Uh, but it does allow us more flexibility. Like there was some flexibility added this year with the, um, ISD program that would allow a student that moved out, uh, during the school year to be able to, uh, stay with, with us as a student, even though they moved to their district, but they wanted to, uh, stay here. They didn't have to go through this whole school of choice, um, option. It became, uh, an opportunity for them just to go ahead and stay with us because they've been with us. So we wouldn't have been able to do that with the other, the one oh five and the one oh five C, so it's a benefit for us.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All right. These, uh, are rather wordy resolutions, so I won't make you have fun with this. I'll say, can I please have a motion that the FHPS Board of Education exercise the option permitted by Section one oh five of the State School Aid Act of nineteen seventy-nine, as amended by Public Act three hundred of nineteen ninety-six, to not accept Section one oh five applications of non-resident students from outside our district for purposes of operating inter- intermediate school, school district-wide school of choice program in accordance with Section one oh five for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year?
So moved.
Second. All right, and then can we have a vote on this one, please? This is Nyamayer. Dr. Majad?
Yes.
Ms. Kamal?
Yes.
Mr. Colley?
Yes.
Mrs. Tryon?
Yes.
Dr. Fosson?
Yes.
Mrs. Nyamayer, yes. Okay, there are two more pieces to this. Can I please have a motion that the FHPS Board of Education exercise the option permitted by Section one oh five C of the State School Aid Act, Public Act one nineteen of nineteen ninety-nine, as amended by Public Act two ninety-seven of two thousand, and not accept applications for enrollment from residents of contiguous intermediate school districts for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year?
So moved.
Second. And could we have a vote on this, please? Dr. Majad?
Yes.
Ms. Kamal?
Yes.
Mr. Colley?
Yes.
Mrs. Tryon?
Yes.
Dr. Fosson?
Yes.
Mrs. Nyamayer, yes. And the last piece, can I please have a motion that the FHPS Board of Education participate in the Kent Intermediate School District Collaborative Schools of Choice Program for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year? Yes, so moved. Second. And can you have... Dr. Majad?
Yes.
Ms. Kamal?
Yes.
Mr. Colley?
Yes.
Mrs. Tryon?
Yes.
Dr. Fosson?
Yes.
Mrs. Nyamayer, yes. All right. I think that's always the wordiest one of the year. Uh, all right, so now we are up to operating millage, which, uh, Dr. Majad explained how the operating millage works, why we asked for it, why we're asking for it now, things like that. Um, there, there will be an opportunity here if there's discussion, but can I please have a motion that the FHPS Board of Education adopt the resolution setting the date of May sixth, twenty twenty-five for the purposes of putting before the voters a six-year renewal of the eighteen mil operating millage and setting the ballot wording and election registration notice forms? Just moved.
Second.
Okay, is there any further discussion or questions on the operating millage? Okay, let's go ahead with our, oh, oh, vote then, please. Dr. Majad?
Yes.
Ms. Kamal?
Yes.
Mrs. Tracalli?
Yes.
Mrs. Tryon?
Yes.
Dr. Fosson?
Yes.
Mrs. Nyamayer, yes. Thank you. All right, now we are up to board policies. Um, I'll just do a little brief primer here on this one. As you all know, in August, well, under the Biden administration, there were changes made to Title Nine, uh, to their, to those regulations. We needed to be in, in accordance with those regulations. So in August of last year, we adopted new policies that were reflective of those regulations. There were court cases that came out through this, but until court cases decided one way or another, that's still what we have to follow. Just in January, this last month, there was a, uh, a federal district or a federal judge ruled that those are not allowed to be followed, um, and so that we need to revert to twenty-twenty regulations. So since that is now the regulations that according to courts of law that we have to follow, what we are voting on today is to put back into place the twenty-twenty regulations that we had prior to when we adopted the twenty twenty-four. Like last time, the twenty twenty-four were the regulations that was the law that we were supposed to follow, and now that has changed. And so now we need to make sure that our policies are reverting back to follow what the current law is. Um, so can I please have a motion that the Forest Hills Public Schools Board of Education adopt and/or delete the policies as were presented in the board packet?
Could I actually mention something before? Is there any opportunity to discuss these at all?
There is absolutely opportunity to discuss. So we got moved, second, and then discuss.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, beautiful. So moved. Yeah, thank you.
Second, okay. Discussion.
Thank you, sorry. Um, I just, I just want to, to say that for all of this, you know, all, all the verbiage that's going back and forth at the federal level and our duty to comply with those things that has caused all, you know, the, the kind of ping ponging. Um, my goal in sitting through all of these as a non-attorney, as a non-politician, non, you know, all of these things, um, is just to feel confident that every kid in Forest Hills and every staff member in Forest Hills and every adult, everybody is protected and feels safe and is not discriminated against. Um, and, and I, I feel that that is the case. I felt that that was the case before we did the, the first change in August and that it continues to be now, that more than just federal policy dictates how we treat people in Forest Hills and there are state things and there are district things, um, expectations. And so I just, that, that has been my goal, I guess. Um, and hopefully we all feel the same, that to, to the best of my understanding, um, that all of that is in place to protect all learners and all people in, in Forest Hills, regardless of the, the federal ping ponging that occurs or, or may still occur or whatever. So I just wanted that to be said. I, I feel confident that that's the case.
Yeah, I agree. And that, and that is exactly the case is that we do have, um, in Michigan, we have the L.A. Larson Act that has some layers of protection. We have board policies, things like that. This is really only affects if there is a harassment or discrimination case that somebody wants to file under Title Nine. It affects how that process unfolds, like who's eligible, how, and how they're treated and what the process is. All the other things that we want to have for our kids to make sure that they're not bullied and that they are welcomed and all of those things, we still have policies and procedures in place for all of that. Is there anything else? Well said. Yeah, it's exactly what I was gonna say. All right, so then can we please have a vote on, uh, adopting and deleting the board policies? Dr. Majad?
Yes.
Ms. Kamal?
Yes.
Mr. Colley?
Yes.
Mrs. Tryon?
Yes.
Dr. Fosson?
Yes.
Mrs. Nyamayer, yes. All right, and now we are up to superintendent's report.
All right, thank you. There are definitely some things happening and, uh, great job on your, uh, committee reports. The, the details of them are very important. Appreciate that. Um, the governor, uh, created her budget proposal and she, uh, her finance people presented that. Um, on the surface, it looks, it looks good. Um, the, uh, amount of, uh, revenue coming into the state of Michigan is a positive and what she's projecting, um, in her, um, proposal, and keep in mind, she's one oh three. This kind of gets the budget year started, uh, for them, is a four percent increase, which would be about ten thousand dollars a student, which is great. Um, the caveat to that is that they're not giving us the same money they gave last year um, around the, the retirement cost to reduce the overall district cost. So it likely will, uh, if, if it all went the way that she put it, it would, uh, that would be a negative for us. So that isn't overly great. There are some categoricals too that have a four percent increase. Many of those categoricals, uh, don't impact us at a high level. Uh, but ultimately what is to know, uh, those two things, the four percent, uh, increase is what she's looking at and then not, um, funding the retirement cost. So we'll continue to watch that, um, because that is a big piece. She will have this, her state of the state on February twenty-sixth. Uh, she'll talk a little bit, uh, you know, around her initiatives and those kinds of things. Um, important to note, unfortunately, they're in her budget, uh, proposal of still funding colleges out of, um, the School Aid Fund, which is a significant hit if that in and of itself stopped. Um, it would make a tremendous impact in, in public education. Um, the, um, the Senate has, um, put forth some legal action, um, to get those nine bills that were, that have not been sent to the governor yet. Um, they're trying to get those, uh, sent to the governor. So again, uh, there's just lots of bickering that's going on there, but those nine bills, um, we have, uh, Bill sixty fifty-eight, which, um, would impact health insurance. Uh, it's the one we've been updating for a while, but it is still in that package. Uh, so that still sits there, uh, but that is, uh, gonna be argued out in the courts, it looks like. One of the things to acknowledge is with all these executive orders and, um, you know, CJ talked a, a little bit about the ping ponging and so on, but just keeping in mind that executive orders are memos, uh, to respective departments, uh, within the government, uh, and their directives, and they're not law. And so from that, when those executive orders, uh, take place, then there are, uh, there's usually timeframes, ninety days, hundred and twenty days for a plan to be created. But as we've seen, many of those, uh, come with lawsuits. And then that ultimately dictates if there is anything for school districts or other organizations to do. So just keeping that in mind, because I think there's a lot of people that hear when there's an executive order and they see it on social media that it's happening the next day. Um, and that's, that's not the case, um, within schools. We have, uh, worked with our, uh, administration to, uh, understand, um, and kind of reiterate what expectations are, um, when we have, uh, people that come to offices and are requesting information. Um, we as a school district are constantly working with outside agencies, uh, that might be, you know, looking for information or that they, they wanna have meetings and so on. And ultimately, uh, there are processes in place. And we really, uh, from our district are looking to, uh, remind, to centralize, uh, those information requests so that they come through Assistant Superintendent Neese or myself, that there's anything that's out of the ordinary or the non-typical. So our staff is, uh, well aware of that, those that would be, uh, exercising, um, you know, those requests. The operational millage, uh, obviously CJ talked about that, uh, in depth, but just can't reiterate enough that that is a requirement, uh, for communities in order to get full, uh, foundation allowance for our students. And it's an imperative, uh, piece, so I appreciate the approval on that. Uh, we do have midwinter break, uh, this Friday and, uh, the following Monday, although the weather people might be starting a little early for us according to, uh, students on social media. So, uh, it does look like Wednesday afternoon and the Thursday, we'll have a snow event of the six to eight inches. So we'll see what that, uh, what that brings, but might wanna take your stuff home with you when you go, um, on Wednesday.
So you're saying you don't have to panic about the emails, balance, I'm filled out?
Yeah. You might wanna do it early.
Okay.
The, the other piece I wanted to, uh, mention is that, uh, we've talked a lot about, um, you know, getting people's voice and, and hearing, uh, people's perspective. Um, in the middle of this month, we'll be, uh, putting out our engagement surveys, uh, really looking forward to that, that it will go out to all of our stakeholders and that will include, uh, our employee groups, that will include, um, our parents, that'll include students. And ultimately, what we're really trying to figure out is what type of, uh, experience have they had here at Forest Hills, whether they're an employee, a parent, uh, or a student? And then, uh, really identifying what barriers, uh, that, that might be there and try to create a better experience for them moving forward. And those will be, uh, you know, a normal cadence as we, as we continue and, and, uh, we're really looking forward to that. That'll be, uh, third party that will help us with that survey, that will get the results of the survey, will summarize the survey, and then ultimately we'll take action steps, you know, based on the district, based on the individual buildings, departments and so on. So really looking forward to that. And then in the month of March, uh, there'll be, uh, another survey that will go out and that will be, uh, focused around, um, our, uh, some of our programming, uh, that we have and, and try to see what type of an impact, uh, that that is having as well. And if it's meeting the needs of our, of our learners and our communities. So lots of opportunities to appropriately give your, uh, your feedback and your voice, uh, around some of these topics. That's so important to all of us. So looking forward to that.
Thank you very much. All right, we are up to board communications. Does anybody have any board communications today? It's only been a few weeks since our last meeting. Now it's quiet.
Well, I have two, that means.
Oh, you do have two. You were, you were sitting there looking down. I was like, oh, CJ doesn't have one this much.
Yeah, sorry, sorry. Uh, one, just a quick update from the foundation. Um, the spring grant cycle is closed. They have, uh, they received about forty applications, um, totaling like a couple hundred thousand dollars in asks, which is really cool, some really innovative, uh, things. So those are being reviewed. Middle of March will be the announcement of, of those award winners. The, uh, foundation would also like, uh, the district to, no, they're looking for a couple of new volunteers for their, uh, board trustees. There are, uh, two vacant seats, I think, coming up on the board. Both of them are Forest Hills Central folks who are leaving the board. Uh, it doesn't decide a requirement that you're in Forest Hills Central, but they just try to, I think, keep equal representation from the different attendance areas. So if anybody out there is interested in, uh, volunteering and doing more, uh, through the foundation, they can find more information on the website or, uh, reach out to envelope Dell to learn more about that. Um, and my second update was that I got to take the kids to Forest Hills Eastern's production at Mary Poppins, uh, this weekend. Uh, the fire center was incredibly well done, um, as usual. Uh, they had a, a, a great time. Our, our kids did, everyone did awesome. Uh, but what I really noticed, we went to the matinee on Saturday and there were dozens[1649.33] and there were dozens of students in their shirts and ties and dresses, also there to see the show right before going off to swirls and to dances. And that the Eastern students' peers from Northern and Central, in the midst of their busy day and big day and night, you know, still felt to come and support them, and to go straight to dinner and dance from there. I just thought that was very cool, to see them support their peers, and to see students really embrace, you know, one FHPS, I guess. So that was my thought, is I was chasing kids through the lobby afterwards, trying to get autographs from everyone. So bravo to Eastern Theater. It was a very good show. It actually worked out, yeah, probably perfectly.
Yeah, that was amazing.
Yeah, so, very cool.
Does anybody else have any? No? All right, then we're up to public comment. At this time, we welcome members of the community to address the board. When you are called, please come up to the microphone and state your name and your address, and limit your comments to three minutes. Please direct all comments to the board. Per established procedures, we will not interact with speakers during public comment, but everyone who indicates that they would like follow-up from the district will receive follow-up from the appropriate administrator. Okay. Do you hear? All right, first up is Scott Insolma.
Hello, this is Scott Insolma. I got a few things just to talk about. Well, number one, I did see that the Fine Arts Center does the naturalization oath ceremony for the Western District Court. And I see that they're doing that this Wednesday. So I'm very happy that we can be, our community can be a part of that. So that's actually a very good thing, get people in here that have come to this country and done it the right legal way, and that we get to play a small little part of that, those people to basically be part of the American dream. So bravo, Forest Hills. Second, I was here for the finance meeting. I filmed it. We got just under 100 views from the last week, so I still am imploring for you guys to film the curriculum and finance meetings. It's simple, just press that little button, focus in, and then post it online. I know you guys have been keeping up on uploading the YouTube videos of these meetings a lot in a more timely fashion, so thank you for that. I do appreciate that. Also, I'd still like to see more info in these board packets. I know you guys authorized several millions of dollars for playground equipment, which I know I did see that in the finance meeting, a little bit, some detail as to what, you know, examples of what we're getting. But just to show again where we're at, obviously, you guys do have the capacity to make a long board packet. I believe this one's just a little over 100 pages, mainly because of the board policy changes. But obviously, that technology is there, and, you know, it doesn't hurt to show again where our money is going. It's been a few months since I've been here, but I did go and take a tour of Central Middle with the principal back there. Go, good job, Jeff, I believe. And it was great to see where our tax dollars went. And it looks like a very big collaboration and upgrade from the time when I was there back in the early 90s. So glad to see that we're, you know, stepping up and keeping up with the times and everything like that. But again, just still like to see more details. Again, you guys authorized spending a little over $17 million, and there is some details, but, and I do like how the check registry is up there for the past several years now, so we can search those, where before they didn't have that. Mr. Colley's sort of acting like he doesn't know what I'm talking about. But before, we, you'd have to FOIA where our money went. So I'm glad that we are taking steps for that, so. And also, Mr. Curry, I appreciate being able to speak with you about valedictorians. I don't know where we're at with that. This is now the time, if we do want to proceed with that, that would be great, since we got a new administrator here and some new principals, at least at Central, and I believe at Northern, too, to possibly go valedictorians as well for the 2025 class. Thank you.
Thank you. Nick Pro. Sorry, I didn't have my microphone on. There, sorry, microphone issue. Uh, Nick Pro. Okay, we'll move on then. Jared Jacobowski.
Jared Jacobowski, still on White Hills. It's been a while since I've addressed the board for the first time for the new members. Greetings. Tonight, how about a refresher crash course that crams 100 years of public education history into three minutes? Away we go. John Dewey was a Marxist and atheist, and of course, the founding father of modern American public school system. By the 1930s, Professor Dewey began his long incremental march to weave critical theory into America's schools of higher education. Critical theory and thinking were not what you assume it to be. Nope. Dewey imported this radical ideology and its like-minded Marxist atheist proponents from the Frankfurt School in Germany. And by critical thinking, they meant being exclusively critical of and undermining traditional values and traditional structures within education, and well beyond. In the 1980s, higher ed imported another Marxist atheist education expert, Paulo Freire, and he introduced into the welcoming hearts and minds and curricula of American education departments, wait for it, critical pedagogy, AKA, critical education theory. Freire became one of the most quoted experts in textbooks for wannabe teachers. His quotes are explicit. Bottom line, he taught that literacy and math proficiency, academics, were secondary to our kids' political, social education, and that involved teaching everything through the lens of the oppressed versus the white oppressors. He proclaimed academics are tools of the oppressors. Critical pedagogy is the direct precursor of critical race theory, CRT. How do you spell CRT nowadays? D E I, diversity, equity, inclusion. This social engineering is seen by institutions and businesses to be ineffective, costly, and counterproductive. A much more accurate acronym for DEI is proving to be division, envy, injury. Long story short, America's dollar investment per pupil is now the highest worldwide. But our country's public school student performance has plummeted from the top two in 1980, now down to around 30th worldwide. Who could possibly think these painfully inverse trajectories are coincidental? Well, to paraphrase 1984's author, George Orwell, "Some ideas are so outrageously delusional that only an educated intellectual could possibly believe them." So here's to rediscovering traditional values and common sense. Thank you.
Thank you. Savannah Beal.
I wrote notes, too, because I'm nervous. My name is Savannah Beal, and I live at 7852 Ashland Drive, southeast. And I am here to talk about diversity, too, so thank you for the introduction. My name is Savannah Beal, and I'm here tonight to advocate for accessible ground cover for lower elementary school playgrounds. Currently, these playgrounds use woodchips as ground cover. Woodchips are not only messy and unstable during the winter months, but more importantly, they are not ADA compliant. This creates a significant barrier for children who use wheelchairs or other mobility devices. We talk a lot about creating inclusive environments for learning, but inclusion doesn't stop at the classroom door. It extends to every part of a child's school day, including recess and outdoor play. Play is essential for childhood development. It's where kids learn social skills, build friendships, and foster confidence. But right now, some of our students don't have an equal opportunity to access these experiences because of something as simple as ground cover. Our district has made remarkable investments in its facilities, including state-of-the-art fields and athletic spaces. And I applaud that progress. But we cannot overlook our young learners, especially those in our special education programs, which are already segregated into just a few schools in the district. Adding a few pieces of accessible equipment does not make them ADA compliant nor actually accessible for children with mobility limitations and differences. Those playgrounds, as they stand today, are simply not accessible. I understand that budgets are tight, but it's a matter of priorities, particularly at Meadowbrook, which has multiple wheelchair users and students with limited mobility, my first grader being one of them. The recent millage demonstrates that this district is capable of making significant investments when we decide that something matters. And this, ensuring that every child has a chance to play and feel like they belong, absolutely matters. While initial costs may be higher, rubber ground cover is low maintenance, potentially saving on long-term costs compared to materials like woodchips or loose rubber that need regular replenishment. I urge you to allocate funding for flat, stable, accessible ground cover on the elementary playgrounds. It is a step toward creating schools where every child, regardless of their ability, can participate fully in their education and their play. Thank you.
Thank you. Vince Mahano.
Vince Mahano, you'll find me at 6860 Cascade Road. My speech reflects my views only and no affiliated organization. Greetings in front of this board seem irrelevant, but I recommend all minors leave immediately. On 9/23/24, I emailed Board President Fawcett, wrote, "FHPS libraries do not contain pornography." "We have not included pornography in our collections in the past, do not have it now, and do not intend to include it in the future." This book is "The Carnival at Bray" by Jesse Foley. You will find it at Northern High School, available to students as young as 14. "Well," Maggie said, putting an arm around her sister's shoulders. "When you're 16 and I'm 21, we'll talk all about this," establishing that Maggie is 16 years old. The whiskey's power hit her square in the face. "I don't feel so good," she said. "Are you going to gawk?" Paul asked. "Maybe." She tried to smile at him, but her head hurt. He grabbed her waist and kissed her, his spit cold and wet on her lips. She kissed him back, eyes stretched shut, mouth holding open. She felt his cold fingers yank up her sweater and squeeze her breast roughly. He pulled her sweater off, and then after some fumbling of her bra, and dropped both pieces of clothing to the wet ground. She could feel her nipples pucker and tighten in the salted wind. Bam, sucked it hard, as she gritted. It did occur to her to tell him to stop. With his free hand, he yanked the button of her jeans, pulled on her zipper, and stuffed his hand down her underpants. He found her warm opening and twisted two fingers inside. Her breath caught sharply as the tight tissue inside her unknit itself and gave way. And then the strangest thing happened. The pain of what he was doing to her somehow made her feel better. A memory floated before her of Samantha Stine, who had taken Maggie into the bathroom, unbuttoned the cuff of her school blouse, and showed Maggie the pattern of razor marks she scored herself with. "Hurting myself is the only thing that makes me feel better," Samantha had said. Now, with Paul's fingers twisting inside of her, his teeth on the skin of her breasts, she finally understood. He pulled his hand from between her legs, and she heard this dull clinky of his belt buckle, the sharp exhale of his zipper being undone. "Push your mouth on it," he whispered. His forearm had heavy pressure on her shoulders, and she crouched, made his spine facing seaward. He put his hands on the back of her head, pushed her closer to his thighs, so she was nearly choking on it. And then, his whole body stiffened and he moaned. To stop herself from vomiting, she spit it out all around. The next morning, she found a streak of ripe red blood in the crotch of her underwear. She balled them tightly and threw them in the trash. She took a long, steamy shower. She never thought she'd be one of those girls who gave her body to someone she didn't even like. But then she thought, looking up at the taut sea like to stop herself from crying, isn't that what growing up meant? Wasn't it just a succession of actions and incidents where you break your childhood promises to yourself and do the very things you always said you wouldn't do? Good day.
Calvin Vanderboom.
Hello. Calvin Vanderboom, I live in Lowell, but I've got two daughters in the district. I graduated from Northern, went to school with CJ. I was a public high school teacher for 10 years. I wrote curriculum for four years, so I'm saying that because I'm aware of the school systems and how they function. I've been very happy with Forest Hills. I do have an issue with an assignment called Social Issues Book Club that my daughter's starting today, and they're going to be doing for the next six weeks. And it's also, my understanding, it's being used district-wide. So we got an email from Carol Lockman on behalf of all the sixth-grade English Language Arts teachers from Northern Trails. In there, there's a PDF, and it had a list of the books that they'd be using for the book clubs. So it's seven topics, 21 books, and there's a lot of tangents. I could go down. I sent an email to the two of you and the three board members on the curriculum committee, and it has this in it in detail, so you can follow up. But my concerns arise because, as a teacher, students have a first amendment. And I want to encourage all students to be comfortable in the district. But when the district is covering sensitive topics, my understanding is there's a deliberate effort to be unbiased, present all sides, and give students as much freedom as possible. This, it's just very odd. It's very out of character for Forest Hills. I want to draw your attention to it. My assumption is you're my partners, and I look forward to working with you. But here's some of my questions. So the curriculum limits the Social Issues Book Club to only seven issues, which doesn't make a lot of sense to me. It only, it limits them to only these 21 books, which Carol Lockman said the school board approved, and she can't change it, and students are only allowed to pick from those books. Which, again, just seems odd. Every single book is fictional. Social issues, there's not one real story. Odd. Several of them are on the most controversial books list, which is odd. All of the topics are only presented from one side. So for example, LGBTQ is one of the topics. There's only pro-LGBTQ books. Odd. All of those one-sided views also happen to align with left-wing political views. Odd. The racism topic has 250% to 700% more books than any other topic. The endangered species environmental topic only has one book. I'm not sure. It can be very broad. But my main concern arises, it's related to the sexual content.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry. Comments, I limited three minutes. Let me hit you three minutes.
Okay, you have the ability to extend. Will you extend it?
No, I'm sorry. We can't do that. We just do three minutes.
Now, in your own board policies, it says you have the ability to extend. Am I right?
From what I understand, it sounds like you sent some emails around and requested follow-up, so we'll be sure to follow up.
Okay, seemed like you wouldn't want to hear it.
Thank you. Up next is Doug Lee. Doug Lee?
Oh, sir. My name is Doug Lee, and I live in 52nd Street. I welcome two of the members. I have been speaking here, and now this is my fifth year. I'm pretty well versed on policies and procedures and education and grading systems within Forest Hills. I have four children graduate from Forest Hills, and I have grandkids coming up. I appreciate, nobody wants to work. Our public school systems are failing across the state. There's 540 school districts of similar dire, maybe smaller, but not counting the academies and ISDs, okay? And the state of Michigan lengths those, and when we talk about growth, and Scott did a presentation about where our growth and our math scores are. We were graded on the highest standard. The state of Michigan grades us on our math proficiency at an A, okay? Forest Hills Central math proficiency is 69.77%. If you follow this as long as I have for five years, they added a curve to this just last year, before last year. They didn't rate this as an A. It tells you the failing school systems across the entire state. In other words, we're ranking ourselves against a failed system. Jared gave an excellent presentation on John Dewey and public education. We have dumbed down our students, and we are accepting 69% as an A. We need to focus on academics. That's been my main subject of conversation for five years. Academics. We have taken away valedictorian status. We have taken away, we no longer focus on academics, and we're failing. I pay my taxes. I went down to Cascade Township. They spanked my belt. And you know what my second largest expense on my taxes goes, just same as everybody else who lives in this district, is your taxes to go to this school. Our own kids cannot afford to live in Forest Hills. I mean, if they're young enough and they don't have a job, they're not going to live here because the taxes are so high. We have put education first in Forest Hills for 30 years. It has always been first. The community provides the money, the funding, everything we ask for because we put education first. But I would tell you that the public does not know, and probably the new school board members don't know, how bad public education is and how it's failing across the state of Michigan. And money's not going to solve the issue. You can simply look at grand public. They operate on a $340 million budget with only 13,000 students. We have under 10,000 students. We have 138 or 142 million dollar budget, and our student enrollment continues to decrease. Something's broken. You cannot just keep going down the same path, and nice chart shows you how well we're doing, if we're already going to curb, how we can feel good about that. We can do better. I'm not here to criticize. I'm just saying, let's change the standards. Let's do better than what everybody else is, and be average. And no longer accept 69% as an A.
Thank you. All right, at this time, all the comments are closed. The board thanks you for your input, and the appropriate district representative will follow up with all of those of you who have requested it. Is there any other business before the board this evening? All right, there are none. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody.